Meeting members and we have 170 people in attendance this evening. Town Clerk Sarah Haskell Aruda has informed me that we are ready to start with a quorum of one, of more than, more than the quorum, but of 170 people and at 7:15 PM. So I'm going to ask everyone to please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. At this time, I'd like to bow our heads in a moment of silence to honor the memory of our friends who have passed away since our last town meeting. We honor the memory of former town meeting members, former town board and committee members, and all those who have served the town. Thank you very much. You may now be seated. So just a reminder, if you have a comment or a question, you can raise your hand using the Raise Hand feature at the bottom of your screen. So let's talk about how we're going to go through this tonight. I know you're all old hands at this, so I am going to read the title of each article, then I'm going to recognize the sponsor. The sponsor will summarize the article. A motion will be made and seconded by a town meeting member. Finance Committee and Select Board recommendations will be read, and then we will open the floor for discussion. If you wish to speak, please click on the raised hand at the bottom of your screen or press star nine if you have dialed in. I will be recognizing people in the following order, those that have not spoken, and then those that have not spoken on this article. When you're unmuted, please give your name and precinct number each time you speak. In terms of debate, all questions will be posed to me as the chair. I will make my best effort to get you an answer to your questions. Cross-examining is not allowed, town officials, of town officials or other members of the meeting. Our goal is to get information and use the information to make good decisions. While we have no speaking limits, please be brief and not repetitious. If someone's already made a point that you wish to make, consider if it truly needs to be made again, and by clicking on the raised hand, you are able to withdraw your question. We're here to discuss issues and not people. We refer to issues, positions, and points of view. We avoid using names. We do not attack other people or question their integrity. We are all here to do the town's business. We may do it in different ways, but we respect those differences. If you have heard enough debate and want to end debate, please raise your hand to be recognized, and when I call on you, say I called the question or I moved the previous questions. Two-thirds is, a vote is required for passage. If it passage, passes, debate stops, and the question before town meeting will be put to a vote. Amendments. Proposed amendments to the main motion must be made in writing and sent to tm@town.dartmouth.us. The sooner you get those in, the better for us here to recognize those motions. When we have a vote, the question will appear on the screen, and you will have an opportunity to cast your vote on your tablet, computer, or other device. I will do a roll call vote for all town meeting members who have called in, and where there is more than one town meeting member using a device, I'm going to ask those people to raise their hands again. I have a lot of people to thank for enabling our town meeting today. First, I'd like to thank the Select Board for working collaboratively to help facilitate a remote town meeting. These have been unprecedented times, and I know we all thought we would be able to do this live at this point. And I know that's disappointing that we can't all be in the same place together, but hopefully that time will come soon. We have been assisted by an amazing technology team again today. This team of people has been critical to making our town meetings move forward and be as successful as they are, and I cannot thank them enough for having put this together for us and, and really pulled together and facilitated this meeting. The technology crew that will be assisting us today is Jonathan Galishaw, Christopher Branko, Thomas Faraz, Jesse Martin, Michael Corville, Tony Souza, Peter Chase, Daniel Maderas, Michael Maniz, and Tyler Gillis. So thank you again to our, our amazing technology team. Dartmouth Community Television is again covering this town meeting live and streaming on YouTube. Next, I want to introduce you to the people sitting on the virtual stage with me. First, we have Town Council Anthony Savastano, Town Clerk Sarah Haskell Aruda, Town Director of Budget and Finance Gregory Barnes, and Town Administrator Sean McGinnis. Next, we have the Dartmouth Select Board, Sean McDonald Chairman, David Tattelbaum Vice Chairman, Frank Gracie, Stanley Mickelson, and John Haron. Finally, we have the nine members of the Finance Committee who spend many hours reviewing the various warrant articles and their expected impact on the town and its finances to be able to advise town meeting. So I want to thank them, and they are Teresa Hamm, who's the Chair, Robert Garvin, the Vice Chair, William Bowles, Ruchi Chopra, Elizabeth Heidecooper, Brian O'Hare, Adam Silva, Janine Simmons, and John Souza. Before we begin, we need to take care of some preliminary motions. For those, I'll turn it over to our Town Council, Anthony Savastano. Mr. Savastano. Thank you, Mr. Savastano. Could you unmute yourself?
Yeah, unfortunately, I just lost connection to my office.
I'm sorry about that.
I'm trying to reconnect. Sarah, do you have those? You could email them to me.
I actually have them in front of me, and I think I might be able to read them out, and you can correct me if I don't have it quite right. So move and duly seconded that the meeting note the correct call of the warrant and the lawful posting of the return of service thereon. That the moderator is hereby relieved from re-reading each article in its entirety and is allowed to refer to them by title and name. That any motion to, uh, nope, we're not doing that one. That the moderator is hereby allowed to make up, to take up action on any of the several articles out of numerical sequence as she may determine, and that a teller count need not be taken on motions requiring a two-thirds, four-fifths, or nine-tenths vote, and that the moderator may declare whether the motion passes or fails. Do I have a motion? And a second, please. Thank you. Okay. All in favor, please indicate by raising your hand. Here we go. Sorry. It's on the screen. For those that are the second person on a device, if you are in favor, please indicate by raising your hand. Okay, we are going to end the poll, so if you haven't voted, do so now. Okay, we're going to end that poll. Okay, if you are the second person on a device, you may lower your hand. If you are opposed to the preliminary motions and you're the second person on the device, please indicate by raising your hand. Okay, that motion passes at 7:24. Before we get into the warrant articles, Mr. McGinnis has indicated that he has an announcement of a new service available to the town. Mr. McGinnis, would you like to go ahead and talk to town meeting about that, please?
Yes, thank you very much, Madam Moderator. As many of you are aware, the town tries to communicate with the residents and businesses is as much as possible. It can be very difficult in this time of multiple media outlets and social media, and you know, we've heard from the members of the community that they would like to have more feedback from the town. And there's a lot of exciting projects going on in town that we try to make aware, but people aren't aware of, and there's also some serious issues and projects going on in town as well that we want to make sure that residents are receiving the accurate, most accurate information we can provide. So toward that end, we've created what we call an engagement portal. This portal is an interactive portal. Residents and businesses in the public can open an account. If I'll share my screen, I'll show you real quick. Let's see. All right, uh, let's see. It's called Engage, Engage Dartmouth. Everybody can go to the site by either through the town's website or going directly to engagedartmouth.org. It provides a variety of information and also allows for feedback. So people create an account and they can participate in surveys and questions. They can ask questions. We will receive the questions and provide answers to those questions. We have our, currently our master plan update and Bliss Corner update. This is an easier way also to present the information to the public so they can absorb it and find information quickly and easily on particular projects. Down below, we have What the Facts, where people can ask questions that they hear out in the public, and rather than going to social media, which is sometimes not always accurate, we will definitely provide them with accurate answers to their questions through this portal. It also provides for surveys, where, and contests. We're currently having a winter Halloween costume contest for pets and people and businesses, so we hope that people will log in and participate in that as well. So I won't go on and on, but this is how we plan on communicating moving forward. I think it's, this also directs back to our website, so we'll be using both, but this will be our interactive portal to provide information to the public and garner it back. So we look forward to people logging in, creating accounts, and using and hearing, you know, what they like and what they would like to see more out of this engagement portal. So with that, I'll turn it back over. Thank you.
Thank you. So, Mr. McGinnis, it's at engagedartmouth.org. Is that correct?
Engagedartmouth.org, and I'd just like to thank Alexandra Sherman, who's a master's student at UMass Dartmouth, who helped to configure our site for us, along with Cody Had at our Director of Development. So it was a real team effort internally to make this happen.
Sounds great. Sounds like something we should all be checking out, so thank you for that. Okay, so let's get started. Article One, Community Preservation Committee upon Gansett Park and Dias Landing Seawall Project. Do I have a motion? Thank you. And let's see, this is unanimously recommended by the Select Board and recommended nine to zero, nine to zero by the Finance Committee. Mr. Baker Smith.
Thank you. This is a project that would meet the recreation kind of eligibility for CPA funds. The upon Gansett Park and Dias Landing, as folks who have been out there will probably note, has really suffered from erosion over the years, the seawall. This project is to assess the current conditions and identify recommended options for protecting the park and the Dias Landing, looking at options for reconstruction of the seawall, but other, and other strategies that would protect the park and the landing from further erosion, as well as the park facilities from flooding and other kind of impact from, from the coast. The amount requested of CPA funds is $35,940. The balance of the study and assessment for recommendations would come from the Coastal Zone Management Grant, which I believe the town did receive that, approval of that grant, I believe. That could be confirmed by Mr. McGinnis, and then some in-kind services. So we moved that the meeting approved this article.
Thank you. And, and do I have a second? I do have a second, thanks. And as I said, the Select Board voted five to zero to recommend Finance Committee nine to zero. Mr. McGinnis, before I open it for discussion, can you confirm that the town receives that grant?
We have not received the grant as yet. We anticipate receiving the grant. Cody Had at our Director of Development, he can correct me here if I am inaccurate.
Thank you.
Fantastic. Any discussion on Article One? Are we ready to vote? Mr. Freitas, on Article One?
Good evening. I'm only asking this question because I read in your material, don't we have to entertain a motion to conduct a Zoom meeting? Before we begin the Zoom meeting? Because that's what's in your material.
You're probably right. Let me just check with Attorney Savastano. Do we need to get approval to do this meeting, Mr. Savastano?
I'm unmuting here. I'm sorry, I'm having connectivity issues. Yes, we actually should.
Okay, do you want to give us that motion? Thank you, Mr. Freitas.
Move that the town accept holding this fall annual town meeting via Zoom.
Thank you. Okay, on, on that motion before us, here we go. Thank you very much. All in favor, please indicate by voting for the poll. If you are the second device, the second person on a device, please indicate a yes vote by raising your hand. If you are the second person on device, please lower your hand. And if you are opposed to the Zoom meeting, please indicate by raising your hand. Okay, that motion passes at 7:32. Thank you, Mr. Freitas.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Freitas. Good call.
Any discussion on, any discussion now on Article One? Please indicate by raising your hand if you have a question, or are we ready to vote on Article One?
Madam Moderator, just to clarify, we have received the grant.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, ready to vote on Article One? Put that poll up. Thank you. If you are the second person on a device and in favor of Article One, please indicate by raising your hand. Thank you to the people who raised your hand. You can lower your hands now. If you are the second person on a device and you are opposed to Article One, please indicate by raising your hand. Article One passes at 7:33. Article Two, appropriation for community development activities. Mr. McGinnis.
Yes, this article is similar to articles in years past. We were asking for the town to vote to appropriate $60,000 from surplus revenue for the special purpose of community development activities. Examples are consulting services, grant technical assistance in affordable housing initiatives. This amount is, has been received by the General Fund from loan payoffs as a result of the town closing out the CDBG Community Development Block Grant-funded Housing Rehabilitation Program.
Thank you. Mr. McDonald, do you want to raise your hand to make a motion? Thank you. Do I have a second? I have a second. Select Board recommends five zero. Finance Committee recommends nine to zero. Any discussion on Article Two, please raise your hand. Are we ready to vote? All in favor, uh, oh. Mr. Mickelson, are you, here, Mr. Mickelson, are you voting? Or you, or you want to discuss Article Two?
No, I'm voting.
Okay, thank you. Sorry. If you are the second person on a device and you are in favor of Article Two, please raise your hand. Okay, if you're the second person on a device, you can lower the hands. Okay, if you're the second person on a device and you are opposed to Article Two, please raise your hand. Okay, Article Two passes at 7:34. Article Three, appropriation to the stabilization fund. Mr. Barnes. Mr. Barnes, could you please unmute yourself? Thank you.
Just one second, please. This article will take $1,150,000 from surplus revenue to increase the amount in the general stabilization fund, which is intended to fund emergency or extraordinary expenditures. Surplus revenue, which is the town's key source for capital funding, was recently certified at $5,368,033 and will be reduced to $4,218,033 with this appropriation, not including the $60,000 just voted from surplus revenue in the prior article. The town has had a longstanding policy to fund the stabilization fund at 7.5% of general fund operating revenue. The Finance Committee and Select Board recently voted to increase this amount to 10% of the general fund operating revenue. This appropriation will get us roughly halfway to the 10% goal. The reason for this recommended increase in the stabilization fund is to account for greater uncertainties that the town has experienced in the last few years, as well as attempt to maintain the town's overall reserves at a relatively even level as the amount of annual surplus revenue is expected to decline in the next several years.
Thank you. So Select Board recommends five zero. Finance Committee recommends nine zero. Mr. McDonald, you're moving this. Do I have a second, please? Have a second. Thank you very much. Any discussion on Article Three? Mr. Nunes.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Through you to Mr. Barnes. What's the balance in the stabilization fund at this point in time, please?
The balance in the stabilization fund is $7,485,593.
So this will bring it up to roughly?
To eight.
Eight six?
Eight, eight point six million, yes.
Close enough, okay. Thank you, Sarah.
Mr. Markcott. Mr. Markcott, do you need to unmute yourself, maybe?
Oh, I'm sorry about that. Yeah, because I just have a couple of questions, because I'm new to this. I'm, I'm just not sure, like, so who has access to the fund? Does everybody, anyone in the town hall? What is it particularly used for? When you say emergencies, is it, you know, to fix a drain or, you know, something like that? Or is it for office equipment? Well, I just don't, I'm not really sure what the emergency funds are for and who is privy to them.
Emergency would be something like a hurricane, a plague, some sort of unfunded liability that the, the town would have to pay for. None of the monies that are in this fund can be spent without an additional town meeting vote. So in order to take monies out of this fund, it would require another town meeting vote. It would be a two-thirds vote.
Thank you.
Okay. Yeah, so that doesn't seem like a lot of money, because it sounds like it would have to be some kind of catastrophe. A few million dollars doesn't seem to, probably wouldn't go very far, but, okay. Thank you for the explanation.
Yeah, this is, this is, currently our, our stabilization fund is less than one month of our general fund operating budget. So, yes, when you, to view it in the context of the overall budget, it is not a lot of money.
No, should be more. Probably not what everyone wants to hear.
I were attempting to increase it again from 7.5% of the general fund operating revenue to 10%.
Makes sense. Thank you.
Any other questions on Article Three? Are we ready to vote? Could we put up the poll, please? If you are a second person on a device and you are in favor of Article Three, please indicate by raising your hand. If you're the second, please lower your hand, if you're the second person on a device. If you are the second person on a device and you are opposed to Article Three, please indicate by raising your hand. Okay, Article Three passes at 7:40 PM. Article Four, contract term for police body cameras. Mr. McGinnis.
Yes, Chief Lebec and the Police Department are interested in implementing police body worn cameras. There are many systems out there that do both the equipment, the cameras, the storage, the editing, and the maintenance of everything associated with that and the backup and disaster recovery of the information. Mass General Law 30B allows the town to enter into contracts of up to three years. Many of these body worn camera vendors have contracts that go into five years as they maintain the equipment. So the Police Department is looking for approval to enter into a contract term of five years with the event, with the vendor that they have selected.
Thank you. Select Board recommends five to zero. Finance Committee recommends nine to zero. Mr. McDonald, you have made the motion. Do I have a second? Thank you for the second. So just to be clear, this is about the term of the contract and to, to allow the police to enter into a five-year contract. Any discussion on Article Four? Are we ready to vote? Put up the poll, please. If you are the second person on a device and you are in favor of Article Four, please indicate by raising your hand. If you're the second person on the device, please lower your hands. If you are the second person on the device and you are opposed to Article Four, please indicate by raising your hand. Article Four passes at 7:42 PM. Article Five, appropriation for engineering design of small boat marina matching component. Mr. McGinnis.
Yes, as many members may recall, at the last, the previous town, fall town meeting, funds were granted for a matching fund for a feasibility study for a small boat marina. That feasibility study was completed and approved by the Waterways Committee and the Select Board, and now the Waterways Committee is seeking grant funds for the design of the small boat marina, and this would allow for the required 25% match for the Seaport Economic Council grants.
Thank you. Select Board recommends five zero. Finance Committee recommends nine zero. Mr. McDonald, thank you for moving this. Do I have a second? I have a second. Thank you. Any discussion on Article Five? Are we, Mr. Helman, Helmoth?
Hi, thank you very much. I apologize for not knowing the answer to this, but the boat ramp at the end of Rogers Street, is that something that could be opened if we just apply a little money like we are to this project here? Or is there a big obstacle from having that open?
I think I saw Mr. Mello in attendance. Is that something you could address, Mr. Mello? I know it's a little outside the scope of this article.
I can try. That project is entirely separate from what we're voting on today, and that boat ramp has some problems that Mother Nature has thrown at us that money may not be able to throw back at her. That's the best I can give you for that.
Okay, and, and it's, and Mr. Helmoth could reach out to your office directly to get more information about that. Is that true, Mr. Mello?
Yeah, well, actually, that was a conservation project, but we're working together to try to brainstorm something that would work, and so far have come up with nothing, but, so either my office or Conservation might be better. It will explain what's going on.
Thank you, Mr. Mello. Any other discussion on Article Five? Are we ready to vote? Could we put up the poll, please? Thank you. All in favor of our, if you're the second person on a device and you're in favor of Article Five, please indicate by raising your hand. Great. If you are the second person on the device and you're opposed to Article Five, please indicate by raising your hand. Thank you. Article Five passes at seven forty-five. Article Six, Acceptance of Capital Planning Committee Report and Funding of F Y Two Thousand Twenty-Two Capital Plan. Now, what I'm going to do here is I am going to, um, recognize Mr. Barnes to start. And then I, when we go through this article, I'm going to read through, uh, each line item. If you have a question, um, the way to call out a hold is to, is by raising your hand. So, Mr. Barnes?
This article will fund the fiscal year twenty-two, uh, fall capital budget in the amount of one million, four hundred and ninety-three thousand, eight hundred and fifty-six, of which one million, one hundred and one thousand, two hundred and seventy-three is coming from surplus revenue, three hundred and twenty-six thousand, six, six, seven, from sewer enterprise retained earnings, forty thousand, nine hundred and seventeen from water enterprise retained earnings, and twenty-six thousand from the stabilization for Dartmouth Cable Television. No borrowing is being recommended. Details of the projects to be funded and list, listed in this article were provided in the Capital Planning Committee Report as provided in the town meeting packet. The majority of the funding, one million, ninety-six thousand, five hundred, will be allocated to the D P W. Four hundred thousand of this for roadway maintenance and improvements, and another three hundred and fifteen thousand towards installation of two sewer grinders at the North Pump Station. Other notable but less costly projects include a multi-user mobile radio system, which could benefit several departments, and a few vehicle replacements for the school system.
Thank you, Mr. Barnes, and, uh, the Select Board recommends five to zero, Finance Committee recommends seven to zero. Um, I, as I said, I'm going to read the totals, and if you have a hold, uh, raise your hand, and we'll, I, I actually need Mr., um, McDonald to move this. Great, and I have a second. Thank you. Okay, so I'm going to read the totals, and then if you have a hold, um, I will, I'll get your question answered. So, total government, town government total, sixty-nine thousand, seven hundred and seventeen dollars. Dartmouth Public Schools, three hundred and ten thousand dollars. D P W Engineering Division, thirty-five thousand, one dollar. D P W Highway Division, five hundred and sixty-one thousand, five hundred dollars. D P W Construction Division, fifty-eight thousand, five hundred dollars. D P W Sewer Enterprise Fund, three hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. Parks and Recreation, eighty-one thousand, five hundred dollars. Council on Aging, thirty-seven thousand, six hundred and thirty-nine dollars. D C T V Enterprise Fund, twenty-six thousand dollars. This requires a two-thirds vote for passage. Uh, Mrs. Figurito? You might need to unmute yourself, Mrs. Figurito.
Thank you. Uh, Jacqueline Figurito, Precinct Eight. Um, I don't have really a hold on town government, but I had a general question, so that's why I put the hold there. Um, my understanding is that the town is going to be receiving some monies from the Federal Recovery Act bill that was passed in March, and I just wondered if we had any idea at this point, um, what the town is going to be allocated.
Mr. Barnes?
Oddly, we can use that towards sewer water and stormwater, as mentioned in the Capitol Report, whenever possible, uh, when we can substitute, uh, those monies, uh, for what is being voted tonight. Uh, we will do so, but by voting tonight, it allows the appropriation to move forward. So, uh, there are a number of items that we're, we're gearing it toward, but i- in the broad perspective, you can use it toward, again, sewer water and stormwater. Uh, you can use it for other usages if the town can demonstrate revenue loss, and the town is in the process of making those calculations. It should be noted, the bulk of those monies are with the county, and the county has yet to come out with their guidelines as to how to access those monies.
So, so, Mr. Barnes, would it be that we don't have a good, um, handle on what the figure, on the figure that we could expect at this point?
Uh, we have about three, three point three million, uh, directly, and there's another roughly seven million that the county has, uh, on, in, in our behalf. But the, the county has to set the guidelines as to how we might be able to access those monies, and there is the potential we won't be able to fully utilize that full seven million.
Thank you so much.
And, and that money is intended for over a four-year period.
Great, thank you. Um, Ms. DePaulo, Ms. DePaulo? Let's see, a hand raised for Mr. DePaulo, Elizabeth DePaulo? Okay. Any other questions, or are we ready to vote?
Well, we have to move our trip analyst, because she, uh, she's using a older version.
Okay, go ahead, Mr. Pauli, question?
Hi, thank you. Yes, my, uh, Elizabeth DePaulo, Precinct Two. Uh, my question is directed towards the D B W Sewer Enterprise Fund. Uh, I am a little green on my knowledge of, of some of these budgetary, uh, line items. Could you just elaborate on what the engineering and installation of sewer, uh, sewage grinders at North Pump Station would entail?
Sure, let me see if I can get you an answer to that question. Um, Mr. Barnes, is, is that something you can speak to?
I, I can, I can take an attempt at it, and if, uh, I'm sure someone can chime in, but there are two pumps at the, um, uh, current, um, uh, station. They currently don't grind up debris like flushable rags. So this will replace those pumps with, uh, new pumps that include grinders, which can, uh, chew up all sorts of, uh, debris that unfortunately gets put into the sewer system. Currently, without that grinder, it can get clogged up. So this will allow the system, uh, to work, uh, uh, better, uh, without the, the pump failure, and should reduce maintenance, uh, cost and improve station operation.
Great, thank you. That answers my question.
Thank you. Any other holds, or are we ready to vote? Ready to vote? Could we please put up the, thank you. If you are the second person on a device and you are in favor of Article Six, please indicate by raising your hand. Thank you. If you are the second person on a device and you are opposed to Article Six, please indicate by raising your hand. Article Six passes by more than two-thirds at seven fifty-four. Sorry. Article Seven, Appropriation for Collective Bargaining Agreement. Mr. McGinnis?
Uh, yes, thank you. So this article sets aside four hundred and seventeen thousand, seven hundred and seventy-four dollars, uh, from various funding sources to, uh, settle the, uh, collective bargaining agreement with the Dartmouth Town Employees Association for F Y Twenty-One and Twenty-Two.
Thank you. Uh, this article is recommended eight to zero by the Finance Committee, and am I, am I getting a floor recommendation on this from the Select Board?
Correct.
Okay. Uh, Mr. McDonald, would you like to give us the Select Board's recommendation on this article?
Yes, uh, we met, uh, prior to, um, town meeting today, and the Select Board voted to recommend the Article Four to zero.
Okay, and are you moving this, Mr. McDonald, while I have it?
Yeah, you certainly am.
Thank you so much. May I have a second? Thank you, Mr. Mickelson. Uh, any, this requires a two-thirds vote. Any discussion on Article Seven? Are we ready to vote? Can you put up the poll, please? If you're the second person on a device and you are in favor of Article Seven, please indicate by raising your hand. Great. If you are the second person on a device and you are opposed to Article Seven, please indicate by raising your hand. Thank you very much. Article Seven passes by more than two-thirds at seven fifty-five. Article Eight, Leasing of Athletic Complex Comprising Soccer Fields, and uh, Mr. Lancaster? Mr. Lancaster, you might need to unmute yourself.
There we go. Thank you, Madam Moderator.
Thank you.
Um, this article, uh, I'll go over it briefly. It's, it's pretty straightforward. Uh, the lease of the soccer field complex on Russell's Mills Road is set to expire. As a result, this article will allow the park board to advertise and re-enter into a new ten-year lease agreement off of that property. I would ask, uh, the, uh, meetings favorable will vote on the article as written. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, um, Mr. Bosworth, are you moving this article for us? Or I need someone to move this article? I don't see Mr. Bosworth's hand being raised. Thank you, and I have a second. Thank you very much. Um, I, my understanding, uh, Mr. McDonald, is that the Select Board has an amendment to this article?
Correct, thank you, Madam Moderator. I move that the term ten years be deleted and replaced with the term thirty years, and I'll give you my reason why after a second.
Okay, do I have a second, please? Everyone wants to second it for me? Thank you, I have a second on this. Uh, Mr. McDonald, go ahead.
Okay, the reason why this was brought up and, um, to do so, um, last town meeting, uh, we approved a, a term up to thirty years for the, um, property that is now currently being leased by the Burgo Basketball Association. The Select Board, um, is also in favor of doing the same thing, uh, for Crepo Field, um, with the D Y A A when their term comes up. So, in order to have a level playing field for all organizations, we felt that we should have, um, the ability to allow the park board to go up to thirty years if they desire. This does not require them to go to thirty years, but this gives them the option to do so, so that, um, D Y S A is, can be on the same playing field as the B B A, as, um, also the D Y A A. This is just a fairness thing. Uh, they do not have to go thirty years. They could go twenty-five if they want, but this gives them the flexibility to do so, and this gives a little bit more stability for the D Y S A in the future, too.
Okay, and as amended, uh, the Select Board is recommending this four to one. Um, Ms. Ms. Hamm, I'm not sure if the Finance Committee voted on this as amended. If you're available, Ms. Hamm.
We did not, Madam Moderator.
Thank you. Any, uh, so we're gonna, we're gonna deal with the amendment before us. Is there any discussion, um, on the amendment, um, to change the term to do, to, uh, replace ten years with thirty years in the warrant article? Any discussion on the amendment only at this juncture? Are we ready to vote on the amendment? Please put up the poll on the amendment. If you are in favor of the amendment to Article Eight, please indicate by raising your hand. It's on the amendment only. Okay? If you are the second person on a device and you are opposed to the amendment on Artic, to Article Eight, please indicate by raising your hand. Okay, the amendment to Article Eight passes at seven fifty-nine. On the main motion, um, so the main motion is now, uh, moved that the town accept this article as amended through the Article Eight floor motion. So on the main motion, which has been moved in second, uh, do I have a, uh, moved in seconded, do I have any discussion on the main motion? Are we ready to vote? Okay, voting on the main motion of Article Eight. Could we put up that poll, please? And if you are the second person on a device and you are in favor of Article Eight as amended, please indicate by raising your hand. Okay, if you are the second person on a device and you are opposed to Article Eight, please indicate by raising your hand. Thank you. Article Eight passes at eight oh one P M. Article Nine, Personnel Bylaw Amendment, Salary Adjustments and New Positions. Mr. McGinnis?
Uh, yes, thank you, Madam Moderator. Uh, this article changes the, uh, compensation for beach supervisor and lifeguard positions. Uh, the Park and Recreation Board had a difficult time hiring lifeguards this past summer. Uh, this would make the hourly rate competitive, uh, in the region, and would allow them to, uh, uh, promote these new salaries, uh, new hourly wages when they hire for the, uh, spring. Uh, in addition, there's two other, uh, positions that are, yeah, that rates are the same. They are just clarifying that the positions are non-union, less than fifteen-hour week positions, and they'll be, uh, added to our Schedule E to separate them.
Thank you. Select Board recommended five to zero in favor, Finance Committee recommended nine to zero in favor. Mr. McDonald, you're moving this. Thank you. Do I have a second, please? Thank you, I have a second. Any discussion on Article Nine? Are we ready to vote? Ms. Cohen? You might need to unmute yourself, Ms. Cohen.
Hi.
If there's a second, if I, if I, please mute that. Ms. Cohen, did you have a question?
Are you able to hear me?
I am, thank you.
Courtney Cohen, Precinct Eight? Can you hear me, Melissa?
I, we can hear you, yep. So did you have a question on Article Nine?
Yes, my question was, why would the two positions, library technician and custodian, be non-union? And they'd meet the description of the D T E A.
They, they are worked an average of less than fifteen hours per week. According to the D T A contract, they would not be considered union positions.
Thank you. Any other questions on Article Nine? Ms. Cohen? No, no, okay. Are we ready to vote? Could you put up the poll, please? If you are the second ver, person on a device and you are in favor of Article Nine, please indicate by raising your hand. Thank you. If you are the second person on a device and you are opposed to Article Nine, please indicate by raising your hand. Article Nine passes at eight oh four. Article Ten, Amendment to the Flood Plane Overlay District. Ms. O'Grady? Ms. O'Grady, you might need to unmute yourself?
Hear me now?
Yes, we can. Very good, okay. Um, this article is to amend Section Three Seventy-Five dash twenty-seven, point two A through point two C of the zoning, um, bylaw dealing with the flood planes within the flood plane district, and to, and to replace, um, the, uh, June first, twenty-twenty-one, um, flood plane overlay district map, which is part of flood plane overlay district map, which is part of the, uh, Dartmouth zoning map. Um, in order to reflect the Federal Emergency Management Agency, also known as FEMA, revision to the flood insurance rate map panel number two five zero zero five C zero four seven seven G for Bristol County. And it's per a letter of map revision, um, dated July fourteenth, twenty twenty-one. Um, and the, uh, the zoning bylaw and the map would take effect on December second, twenty twenty-one, per FEMA, uh, guidance. Again, this, this revision came to the, um, town just prior to the spring town meeting when all of this, this mapping and the changes were made to the, um, to the bylaw per their requirements. Um, but they requested that we go forward with everything else, knowing that we would have to do this particular piece in the fall. Everyone involved in this particular, um, panel update was notified prior to, um, the last town meeting. And, um, this is, uh, a requirement again of FEMA, so, and the, the error was on their part.
Okay, so what I, what I think I'm hearing you saying, correct me if I don't have it quite right, is that FEMA made some changes, um, to update these maps, to correct some errors. And so it, while town meeting may have remembered, uh, approving a flood plane overlay district, the reason that we're looking at this again is because of, um, a FEMA error and a request that we revoted. Is that correct?
That is, that is correct, and again, it is just one of the panels that you see in front of you that is going to have to be updated per their revision.
Okay, uh, select board voted, uh, five to zero in favor of this article, and Finance Committee voted nine to zero in favor of this article. Um, I, do I have a motion from Mr. Mello? So I need to move in second this, please. I have a motion and a second. Great. Uh, any discussion on Article ten? Um, Ms., uh, Ms. Isherwood Moore.
Yes, just, just as a point of order, I understand that this is required, um, but with my eyesight, it's very hard to see the definition of this map, and I'm wondering, um, if, is this more restrictive or less restrictive? And how are homeowners in those areas going to be notified?
Um, it is originally the way that the map was set up. It was done, um, they inadvertently left something out, so it's not more restrictive of the, of previous mapping, it's just more restrictive of the last round because they made it, they made an error. I don't know if that answers your question or not.
And how are homeowners gonna be, uh?
The homeowners, the homeowners were notified during the, uh, the late spring, early summer months of this problem and that the need, the need for the correction, so everybody has been notified. It is not any more restrictive than previous maps in the past. Just, it was just an error on this last round.
So homeowners got some sort of a letter sent out by the planning?
By FEMA. By FEMA.
Okay, so FEMA sent out a letter.
Right. Does that include insurance companies, too?
I don't, uh, Ms. Moore, what is your question? Does, what include insurance companies?
I, I'm, I'm wondering, like, I, I'm questioning about whether I live in that type of area, but, um, and I live in a condo, so anything would have been through, um.
So what I heard from, what I heard from Ms. O'Grady is that FEMA did the mailing, and that's how people found out about the change.
But does that include regional insurance companies?
Did FEMA, did FEMA contact regional insurance companies? Is that your question?
Yes.
I'm not sure.
No, they did not.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, um, Ms. O'Connell. You might need to unmute yourself, Ms. O'Connell, so we can hear you.
I didn't post anything, actually.
Okay, it looks like your hand is up to me. Um, so, okay, so there you go. Uh, Mr. Murphy. Mr. Murphy, you might have to unmute yourself if you'd like to ask a question.
Is there any advantage to the town or anyone in the town if we don't approve this, to make this correction?
No, absolutely not. We will be in violation of FEMA, uh, requirements.
Thank you.
Uh, Ms. DiPaolo. Nope, okay, and so it looks like there are no, I'll say.
I apologize, I have the old Zoom version. I will update for the next meeting. Um, my question regarding Article ten is if you are already grandfathered into a Loma agreement with FEMA, and perhaps this is not, uh, something you might be capable of answering, but, uh, if you have any information about residents who have a Loma agreement with FEMA that supersedes previous flood planes, is that a situation where residents then would need to reapply, and do you have any, um, knowledge of what that would entail, or would we be grandfathered into the previous flood plane excluding this most recent error, uh, proposed by FEMA?
I'm guessing that would have been part of a FEMA letter to homeowners, but, um, Ms. O'Grady, do you have any further information on that?
Um, I do not off the top of my head. I mean, I, you can reach out to the planning office tomorrow, and I can give you additional information if you require it.
Sure, that'd be great.
Okay.
Um, Ms. Del Sorto. Ms. Del Sorto, you might need to un, unmute.
Um, I'm questioning if the flood plain extends beyond the area indicated at the top of the page, where it ends around the, the number C, Donald Street. I think it extends to, uh, Sharp Street and I'm a Cave Street area. Am I correct at that or not?
Ms. O'Grady, do you have any information about that?
I did not.
Is that something that Ms. Del Sorto can contact your office about tomorrow?
Yes, she can.
That would be, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Sure. Are we ready to vote? Could we put the poll up, please? If you are the second person on a device and you are in favor of art, passing Article ten, please indicate by raising your hand. Okay, if you are the second person on a device and you are opposed to Article ten, please indicate by raising your hand. Article ten passes at eight thirteen. And it, uh, passes by more than two-thirds at eight thirteen. Article eleven. Citizens Petition Transfer Available Funds. Uh, Mr. Heron. Mr. Heron, you might need to unmute yourself, please.
Thank you, Madam Moderator.
Sure.
Uh, this is to see if the town will vote to transfer a hundred thousand dollars from certified free cash to be used as a town matching portion for grants. I'd like to move the article.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Mr. McDonald, do you second it? Thank you. Um, any discussion on Article eleven? Mr. Costa. I'm sorry, Mr. Heron, I'll let you speak right now before I promote somebody else. Go ahead, Mr. Heron.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Thank you for the opportunity to discuss Article eleven.
The intent of this article is to have money readily available if Dartmouth becomes aware of a time-sensitive grant opportunity, and the town needs matching funds. One hundred thousand dollars would be set aside in a separate account, and if not used within the year, it would be turned back into the general fund. I can't take credit for this idea. The town of Wareham saw the value in matching grants quickly and approved this exact article at their annual spring town meeting earlier this year. I work, I work with grant writers and apply for numerous grants in my job as a manager for Northeast Fisheries Sector thirteen. From personal experience, I understand the need to meet deadlines and move quickly. I want Dartmouth to have the same flexibility. I'm not suggesting an elaborate new process. Any time-sensitive grant would be vetted the same as other grants today with the town administrator, select board, town accountant, town council, and appropriate parties weighing in. These same people would make the decision to use the designated funds. The difference is, the finance committee would not have to authorize a reserve fund transfer or wait for the next town meeting. A majority of finance committee members and select board members voted to recommend this article. As I said during the article discussion in our select board meeting, it's like buying a fire truck. You don't buy a fire truck after the fire. Do we wait for a problem, or do we create a logical solution? With this article, I'm asking for, to anticipate a need and plan for the unexpected. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Heron, and I did want to highlight the select board recommended in favor of this Article three to two. Finance Committee recommended in favor six to one with one abstention. Mr. Costa.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. James Costa, precinct four. Uh, I just, uh, Mr. Heron did answer the question, uh, answer, have answers to my question, but, uh, yeah, it does seem like a good idea, and the finance committee did, they used the correct word. I guess nimble might be the word. Uh, in the past, we've had discussions about, uh, having more than two town meetings, and, uh, this, this would, uh, this would help that problem.
Thank you, Mr. Costa. Mr. Markcott.
Yeah, so, um, if, if I'm just hearing this right, I didn't hear a really good reason other than the town of Wareham passed such a situation, and so to me, I, I'm not in favor of something just because another town does something, we should do it. I just don't think there was a good enough explanation given for what we're gonna do with it.
So I, so I think what Mr. Heron said, just to clarify, and you can, I can appreciate that you might not be in favor of it, but what he said was that there would be a hundred thousand dollars available for matching grants in the event that the town got a grant. There would be funds available for matching purposes. That's the purpose of the article.
All right, it seems as though the main criteria is because Wareham passed it, so.
No, asshole.
Uh, I don't know, I'm just, that seems to be the, the best reason for it, and I just don't think that's a good reason.
Thank you, Mr. Markcott. Ms. Ford.
I, I was wondering if.
Could you please give me your name and precinct again?
Failures that this, that is drive.
Ms. Ford, can you give me your name and precinct, please?
Sorry, Catherine Ford, precinct seven.
Thank you. Go ahead.
I was wondering if there are any, um, grant applications that have failed due to the lack of the facility associated with this motion?
Sure, I don't know if anyone can, Mr. McGinnis, I don't know if you have that information.
Uh, yeah, yes, to date, we, he have not lost a grant, uh, due to inability to match.
Thank you. Mr. McDonald.
Yes, um, I supported this article for several reasons. Number one, it allows us some flexibility just in case. Yes, we have not lost a grant, uh, because of lack of funds, but generally, the timing of these grants, um, you know, come within the fall and, well, during the springtime. But in the event it should happen, we would have to go to the finance committee, uh, for a line item transfer, and generally, the finance committee, they're very tight with the line item, with a, with a finance, with a transfer. Um, and the reason that Mr. Heron had gotten this was from, you know, from Wareham. And, you know, the, I guess to say that if one town does it, another town shouldn't do it. There have been numerous, numerous things that the town of Dartmouth has done that they have gotten from other towns. And there have been other towns that have used, um, items that Dartmouth has, has done. Everybody does this, and as Mr. Heron said, this is a one hundred thousand dollars goes, goes to a fund. On June thirtieth, on July first, twenty twenty-two, if this, no monies have come from this, this now goes back into free cash. And we can do this again, say, in the fall for fiscal year twenty-three. So, I mean, it, it gives us a little bit of flexibility, because sometimes there are some quick grants out there that do require matching, and uh, town meeting, we only do town meeting twice a year. Um, you know, we would have to hold another town meeting to get this done, or we would have to go to a line item transfer for the finance committee, so, I mean, this is, this is a good idea, and I passionately say approve this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McDonald. Ms. Moore.
Elizabeth Isherwood Moore, precinct nine. I would like to hear from one of the select board members or one of the finance committee members who opposed this as to why they were opposing it.
Do I have any select board member or finance committee member who was opposed to this article that would like to share their view? I, I don't, uh, Mr. Souza. Mr. Souza? Having trouble, you, you were just unmuted and you've remuted yourself, so maybe you could unmute it. There you go. Having trouble hearing you, Mr. Souza. Let me go to Mr. Tattlebaum, and I'll come back to you, Mr. Souza, if we can get you unmuted. Mr. Tattlebaum.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Um, I think the idea might be a good one, but, uh, it, but I think that the process was, uh, was, was unnecessary. I would like to have seen the process go through the regular, normal, um, process of going through a committee and a board, and if, if there's enough of approval through that process, we also, in the same time, establish the rules and regulations of who's gonna do it and when, and what the, uh, what the protections are. I'm very much against it. A citizen petition is a, um, is a way to bypass town meeting, and frankly, I think that this, uh, this, this, um, this article simply does bypass town meeting. We are a very large town with a very, uh, with a small government structure. We do have town meeting. As long as it's around, we should honor it and keep it as it is. Um, I'm very concerned that this article does not have a written, uh, in, uh, conditions as to who's gonna do it, how it's gonna be approved, what the process is. We just heard some comments, but there wasn't, it would have been a much better, more comfortable to me to see that, uh, the article contained all these, uh, conditions with it. Um, it's, uh, uh, I, I don't, I, I also did contact the town of Wareham, and they did approve it in spring, and they have never used it before. Uh, they haven't used it all year long. Uh, all the more reason why I don't think it's necessary. We've never lost a grant. We also have a, um, a very strong grant writing department seeking grants all the time. The town of Wareham doesn't have that kind of personnel, and that may be why, the reason why they did it. Uh, we start losing grants, uh, no problem, we should, we should check it out, but until then, or until we have a structure in place to structure this, to control it, I, I'm against the article. Thank you.
Mr. Mickelson?
Mute myself.
No, you, you did.
I got it. Thank you very much. Uh, I, I'll be very brief. Uh, I think the, uh, town meeting is being jeopardized by this. Um, I believe that we, if we vote in favor of this, we're going down a very slippery slope that we need to be very careful. Please vote again.
Okay, and Mr. Souza? I'm gonna give you an opportunity, try and unmute and be heard again. This is, I'm sorry, I can't, I can't, uh, hear you. I'm not sure if you've unmuted yourself. Uh, okay, Mr., uh, Steen.
Ken Steen, precinct nine. Thank you, Madam Moderator. Uh, with all due respect to Mr. Tattlebaum and Mr. Mickelson, it seems to me that this article is oozing with common sense. Additionally, the article has been favorably recommended by both the select board and the finance committee. Therefore, I'm in favor of this article. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Steen. Uh, it looked like, um, there was a, Mr. Souza was trying to come in in a different mode. I don't know if he's hung up. There you go. Uh, Connie Souza is the one I think we need to promote, which might be Mr. Souza. Connie Souza is the one I think we need to promote, which might be Mr. Souza. So, if, if, Mr. Souza? Yes?
Yeah, sorry about that. I was having problems with my device, so I came in on my wife's.
Yes.
Yeah, the reason I wasn't in favor of this is the process now, nothing's been said that it's broken. We've never lost a grant opportunity because of the bureaucracy we have. And the bureaucracy we have, it gets, the grant opportunity gets vetted by a number of committees and gets voted on, and ultimately, town meeting votes on that. This additional process, I don't know why we're doing, there's nothing broken. But what concerns me is the lack of, as Mr. Tattlebaum said, no written procedure. The verbal procedure is this will be voted on by the selectmen, and the selectmen only. They may get input from council and town administration. But ultimately, they could apply for a grant opportunity with three votes. That concerns me, that town meeting is left out, finance committee is left out, select board's left out, all these other processes. And we could have three people with an agenda apply for a grant that town meeting has no use for. So, in my opinion, if it ain't broke, don't fix it.
Thank you, Mr. Souza. Mr. Roth?
Patrick Roth, Precinct 9. Having served on the finance committee some time ago for a while, quite a while, I've sat through several of these transfer requests discussions, and having to get different people from different departments together. It has worked well in the past. It's not broken, as it was just said, and I'll re, and I'll repeat the closing line. If it's not broke, don't fix it.
Thank you, Mr. Roth. Mr. Govan? Mr. Govan, you might need to unmute yourself.
Yes, Bob Govan, Precinct 9, Vice Chair of the Finance Committee. As a member of the Finance Committee, when we look at things like this, we look at the upside and the downside risk of doing something. And when, in the environment we have today, where there's a lot of federal money and state monies that are coming down the pike, I just felt, I just felt that there is no, there's no downside risk of putting $100,000 aside of certified free cash that if it's not used and go back into the, into the, into the general fund. And, you know, I have a high level of confidence that the management of the town of Dartmouth is not going to do anything that's frivolous. So, I just see that there's, there's no downside to this, and that there's a lot of upside.
Thank you, Mr. Govan. Mr. Ennis?
Ms. Ennis, Robynus, Precinct 1. I call the question.
Okay, Mr. Ennis calls the question. So, we are going to vote to move the question. It requires a 2/3 vote. I'm not sure if we have a slide for that. Okay, so.
The slide, it just says amendment 2.
I'm sorry, okay. So, all in favor of moving the question, please, please vote based on the poll. And if you are the second person on a device and you are in favor of moving the question, please indicate by raising your hand. This is just on moving the question, so we take the question to a vote. Okay, if you are opposed to moving the question, please indicate by raising your hand. The motion to move the question passes by more than 2/3 at 8:30 PM. Okay, on the main motion, the citizens petition that is before us, Article 11. Please vote on the poll if you are the second person on the device and you are in favor of Article 11, please indicate by raising your hand. If you. If you are opposed to Article 11, please indicate, and you're the second person on a device, please indicate by raising your hand. Article 11, Article 11 fails at 8:31. I would entertain a motion to dissolve this meeting. Mr. McDonald, I have your motion. Mr. Mickelson, I have a second. All in favor of dissolving the meeting, please indicate by raising your hand. Those opposed, you are opposed to dissolving the meeting, please indicate by raising your hand. Town meeting is dissolved at 8:31. Thank you so much, everyone. Thank you.